We should show that all seven board members are still present. Mrs. Bernard, do we need another motion to allow Ms. McQuinn to participate since we already did that for the worship?
Yes, but if you could state on the record the rationale as well.
I didn't hear what you said.
Yes, and if you could state on the record the good cause rationale as well.
Make a motion because I can't understand what I'm sorry. My ears are not as good as they used to be. A motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed, motion carries. Ms. McQuinn is authorized to talk to us if she'd like. The first item on the agenda would be, let me get to the right agenda.
Mr. Barbie, here, turn the water, please.
I think what our general counsel was saying was that the record needs to reflect why we're, Mrs. McQuinn is participating virtually.
Oh, why? Why?
The rationale.
Okay. Ms. McQuinn?
Thank you. I have a slight head cold, but knowing during these times that I don't want anyone around me who has one, I decided that I am not going to expose any of the typical board office, the boardroom people in attendance be exposed to me. So, "In the abundance of caution," is the new term, I believe. Head cold, stay at home.
Thank you, Ms. McQuinn, for loving us. We appreciate that. Board members, we have 15 sets of minutes on the agenda to be approved. We need a motion. Motion by Ms. Whitfield, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed, motion carries, 7-0. We have no items added for good cause. Mr. Superintendent, are you withdrawing any items?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not withdrawing anything at this time.
The board has pulled three, two items already, P2 and POL-I-G-1. Anybody want to pull anything else at this point? We need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed, motion carries, 7-0. Disclosure, abstentions, anyone? Seeing none, Ms. Superintendent.
Yes, sir. As we look forward to celebrating the June graduations of the class of 2021, I'd like to take a moment to look back and honor, once again, the class of 2020. According to the Florida Department of Education, the graduation rate for Palm Beach County's school district-operated schools climbed to 94.4%, up from 91.6% in 2019. While I am encouraged by the overall graduation rate, there is still much work to be done in achieving the district's goal of ensuring that every student receives a high school diploma. As a district, we will continue to work collectively and diligently in the best interests of our students and make up for any lost ground that was compounded by the challenges of the pandemic. And now, a shout out to some of the folks who really go the extra mile for our students. January is National Mentoring Month. I am so grateful to all the mentors, especially our teachers and other staff members, who so generously share their time and their experience to encourage and shepherd our children. Programs such as Take Stock in Children are literally changing students' lives for the better. January is also a time that we pay tribute to our officers. January 9th was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. This short video explains the many ways our officers support our students, staff, and schools. I'd also like to share some exciting news with our staff. In the interest of continuing to support wellness, today the district officially opened our first-ever onsite medical clinic for employees and dependents who are covered under the district's medical plan. The clinic, which is located in Building E right behind us at district headquarters, is aptly named DOC, an acronym for District Onsite Clinic. Employees and their dependents are able to use the clinic for acute medical and primary care needs. The clinic will also offer generic prescriptions, vaccines, and let me be clear, we don't have any COVID vaccines as of yet, but other vaccines are available and preventive care at no cost. The clinic's hours are extended to accommodate employees who work throughout the district. I know the DOC will provide, will prove to be a great asset to our district, and I thank the board for allowing this to happen. Mr. Chairman, those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Comments from board members? Ms. Ayala?
No comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. I just wanted to say really briefly, thank you to Dr. Fanoi for sending the letter to our state representative and governors, governor and state representatives in legislature yesterday about prioritizing teachers and our staff members in the COVID vaccine rollout. I think, you know, there's just really a big difference between a person who gets to work at home and a person who goes and stands in front of a lot of children every day and works with them. So I'd like to thank him for putting our voices out there to recommend that to our governor. Hopefully, as vaccines start coming in, I think this is a high priority that we really prioritize our staff because I do believe it's the backbone of the economy to keep education going and keeping the schools open. So, thank you so much for that.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone. And we have a lot of work to do this new year, but we hope to be in our new normal and certainly vaccines. Our teachers are essential, employees, our bus drivers, our staff. We're the largest employer here in Palm Beach County, and we need to have priority with the vaccines for our staff. But I too would like to say congratulations to mentors, the mentors here within the school district of Palm Beach County, the mentors who are part of our business partners that serve our children as mentors, parents who actually service mentors. I get an opportunity to serve as your representative for Take Stock in Children on behalf of the school board, and I've had the opportunity to be a mentor for the last five years. One of my students is now at the University of Florida, and I have a senior this year. And it's been a little difficult during the pandemic to reach everybody, but boy, those Google meets really work in keeping up with the mentees. But I want to thank all of the folks who act as mentors to help our children with success. Take Stock in Children has been a great partner with the school district of Palm Beach County, and they are to be commended for the great work that we do with so many of our children, getting them ready for college. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Jasmine Calderon from Pahokee High School. She has been selected as a leader for life. She is one of 12 students from the state of Florida who will receive special recognition from the governor in Tallahassee or through Zoom for her outstanding work as a student who has participated in Palm Beach County's Take Stock in Children program. All of her efforts of being on target, doing the kinds of things that's needed for her success, has landed her one of 12 from around the state to be celebrated, and there will be one winner, and that winner will be Jasmine Calderon, selected from Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Ms. McQuinn, you kind of see how quickly you're forgotten when you're not in your seat. I'm sorry I missed you from District 1. You want to go next, please?
No, thank you. I have no comments anyway. I'll add mine during our discussion later. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I really had not planned to make comments, but let me just first say Happy Founder's Day to my sorrows. But I also want to particularly uplift Yunus Vivar, who has taken that HBCU college fair to a new level despite COVID, right? So you will see on the district's website the virtual HBCU fair coming up, and I'm just really thrilled. I'm planning to log in and of course see Howard University, right? So, but just to make note the importance of the HBCUs. In a week, we will inaugurate a vice president that attended Howard University. We will swear in a senator that attended Morehouse, and a large measure due to the work of a woman that attended Spelman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. No comments tonight.
Yeah, I have no comments today. That'll take us to agenda item speakers. The only one we have is CTA President Katz.
Thank you very much. My name is Justin Katz. I'm the president of the Classroom Teachers Association. I wanted to briefly speak to the discussion item that Dr. Robinson put on the agenda referencing other school districts throughout the country that are developing vaccination distribution plans for their employees, and I wanted to say that we appreciate the discussion that you'll have and the forethought to hopefully put in place a plan so that it's, you know, better to have one and not need it than need one and not have it philosophy. We don't know what's going to happen with the governor's decision-making and granting that priority status to employees of school districts, but it's better to be prepared. And then I'd also piggyback on that by thanking the superintendent for issuing the letter to the governor as well. I think that it helps, I know that the State Teachers Union, FEA, along with our national counterparts, the American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association, have all been lobbying for state governments and governors to ensure that, you know, we match our desire with our planning and preparation. If we all want schools to be open, if we all want to go back to as normal a situation as possible, that the vaccination is the silver bullet to get to that place. So why deny or not consider giving those employees the opportunity? So I just wanted to thank you all for that and let you know that the teachers are with you, that anybody who wants a vaccination should be able to get one when the supply is available to us. So thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Next item on the agenda would be the approve the consent agenda. Does any board members want to pull anything else at this point? We have P2 that's been pulled off, POL-I-G-1, and TO-1. Anything else? If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Brill. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed, motion carries, 7-0. Ms. Superintendent, that'll take us to the first item on our new business, which is P2.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve the job description that's submitted.
Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So I pulled this item. I'm going to allow, ask the superintendent to share his explanation, and then if you would please allow me to follow up with a suggestion. But the reason I pulled it was when I read the item, it appeared to be a new job description for a new position indicating that it was going to be funded with existing budgeted funds. And my concern, since we're in such a tight budget period, was that, you know, what was budgeted for yesterday may not be feasible tomorrow. Superintendent explained to me that this actually replaces another position. Mr. Superintendent, if you could explain that, and then I do have a suggestion going forward for how we receive these.
Yes, ma'am. As we started reviewing all of our org charts and looking at different positions, one that stood out, there was only one chief in the district that did not report to me, and that was Mark Howard's position, our Chief of Accountability. And so he's, unfortunately, he is retiring next month. So what I decided when I talked to the deputy, instead of rehiring another chief of accountability, we would lower that position to an assistant superintendent to be better in line with the logic of who a chief reports to. And so what we did was, we will be eliminating the chief position and creating the assistant superintendent position to replace the chief of accountability.
So if I may follow up, my request to the superintendent is that when we do receive these new job descriptions or situations like that, that we be provided with information explaining that this is replacing another position, that that other position is going to be eliminated or whatever. Because just reading this, it looks like we've created a new position, and during these budgetary times, I want to be very, very clear that, you know, we have to look at these very closely, and I just was apprehensive about increasing that level. So thank you.
No, understood. We needed to tighten up our protocols. The expectation was that the board was going to be notified of that, but I'll make sure we do it in writing moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. McQuinn.
Thank you. I was going to discuss this with the superintendent, but knowing that it's already been addressed, I want to bring it up now. This is the first time in, since I've been on the board, when I requested that the financial impact be very specific, and to date, it has been. This will set the funding for the existing budgeted funds. I, now, I realize that this is replacing someone that Mr. Howard is retiring, so there might not be a specific dollar amount that we can get based upon whoever is hired, but I would like to see that dollar amount at least within a window because this is a change in practice from the past four years. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson and Mrs. Andrews?
This is just a reminder, you know, I ask you to put the org charts whenever you have a new job description, and every time we get this, you have to, somebody has to ask for them to put the org chart. And I saw the one that you attached this time, which was fine, but I'm requesting not just a piece of the org chart, I'd like to see the full org chart, as well as the piece like you gave us this time to show us exactly when you zero in as to what was, what was changed, what's new, and so on. And then what would it look like, even though it's in a draft process because we had not approved the job description yet? Put it into the big picture so I can see what it looks like. All those kinds of things help people to know what's going on here. It was just interesting, nobody, Dr. Fanoi, said anything until we read it on the agenda, but I've been asking over and over about the org chart, and that should be just automatic. So thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So I still didn't, I didn't see the attached org chart, so, but first, let me thank Mr. Oswald for probably having four conversations with me about this, and I realize that I just have issues with hierarchy, and that's what I was having a problem with. But this, so in response to my question, though, I just want to note that because of the plan to double up whoever is the incoming assistant superintendent of whatever this is, with the current chief of performance accountability, the actual financial impact based upon that plan, not the job description, is essentially $60,000. Now, the other thing, just to make note, is both the old and the new job description are a salary level 11. And so I guess there's an expectation that there would not be any significant increase from one to the other in terms of salary there, but, you know, I'm, I've, I have been convinced that this is a good thing, and so I'm going to walk with it. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. POL-I-G-1.
I recommend the board approve the development of the proposed revised policy 1.092, Inspector General.
Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Ms. Michael, do you want to move to the front table so your attorney can sit next to you? I mean, if you're all set up there, but...
I'm fine right here.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to speak today. I'd like to clarify a few things. As the inspector general for the school district of Palm Beach County, I in my office represent independence and integrity. Make no mistake, those are the cornerstones of an OIG, and I will allow nothing less than honest transparency. Even the mere appearance of impropriety may negatively impact the effectiveness of this office. Board members, I am underscoring this commitment to eliminate any confusion that may have arisen as a result of several changes to the district policy that I have proposed. My recommendations were based on real-world IG investigative experience. I started as an investigator in 1997, not as a manager or an IG executive. As an IG investigator, I personally conducted administrative IG investigations here in South Florida involving youth and staff. As a line-level investigator, I was routinely asked, who will read my statement? These concerns were not typically made by subjects, but were imposed by employees and youths who were being asked to provide testimony, which often involved in making statements against those in power. Considering the OIG's purposes are best achieved when we have a trusting public that feels comfortable and engaging with us, it behooves us to limit unnecessary chilling effects. I have seen firsthand the misuse of reporting systems where the process is weaponized and used for personal vendettas or the dissemination of vague rumors. Our office takes great care in trying to prevent intentional misuse. However, when entrusted with responsibilities of the office and to protect and safeguard the students, the staff, and the public fundings, we will always err on the side of caution. Yes, it is true that someone may file a complaint anonymously. However, it is important to clarify a few points. Each initial allegation we receive is vetted and reviewed for the following: qualification as a whistleblower, jurisdictional issues, and criminal versus administrative. If an individual requests anonymity and they do not qualify for whistleblower status and their identity is known to us, we cannot, as a matter of practice or a participant's preference, erase the names and render them anonymous. Those, this also applies to witnesses who are involved in part of an investigation. I have read where the publication of investigative reports by the school district's OIG was contrasted with non-school district OIGs. Our policy, our OIG policy specifies that all audits and investigations will result in a report, and that the OIG reports will be published on our website. Under current policy, I do not have the same options which may be available to other OIGs. I can neither close an investigation by other means nor exercise the option to keep an unsubstantiated, potentially reputation-ruining investigation report from automatic publication on our website. Prior to making this recommendation, I looked at how OIGs who face the same unique essential duties of providing quality education to our youth, operating in terms of compelling statements, staffing, et cetera. I also looked at the school district OIGs throughout the country, how they address reporting their investigations. The school district OIGs I was able to identify were large districts similarly situated to Palm Beach. Each of those school district OIGs identified do not automatically publish each investigation. My intention in removing the requirement to automatically publish all investigation reports on the website was to foster open lines of communication where employees, parents, students, and the public were able to report and participate in investigations which are fair, thorough, impartial, and to guard against retaliation and potential stigma which may be associated with participating in an investigation. This belief was expressed during my initial interviews for the OIG position. It is no way as a result of any influence or any pressure from any board member or district. This was solely something that I said during my initial interviews. However, as stated at the beginning, independence and integrity are the cornerstone of an OIG. Accordingly, if the price to pay for the integrity and questioning the transparency of our office against putting the report on the website, I do not see that it rises to the same level. My goal will remain to prevent, detect, deter, fraud, waste, and abuse. I remain positively focused into not only report on what has been found, but to provide insight and foresight to the board and the district. We are currently developing means to ensure that all complaints made within the district, regardless of who may be involved, are seen as consistent, fair treatment. We look to continue to raise the bar of our professionalism. We will not tolerate bias in our work. I appreciate the continued support of each of the board members. I look forward to working with you as we move forward through these difficult times. And thank you for giving the opportunity.
Before you go over the policy, I just have a question for you. So we did get, you know, we did get some negative publicity, obviously, because of the suggestion that we don't post these, all of them, on the website. It came from, I think, an employee in the Palm Beach County IG's office. So can you tell me what the IG, does the Palm Beach County IG publish every single report on their website?
And let me, let me first say, the Palm Beach County, County OIG ordinance does not require that every investigation, every audit result in a report. So they have other means by which they can complete or end a investigation. And nor does their policy require that all reports or all findings are published on their website. That is a latitude that I do not, I'm not requesting, I do not believe, I want, I do not want that discretionary where I can choose which one I issue a report on, what I don't. If I completed an investigation, the findings are the findings, and we stand behind what we do. And I believe that's very important.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So I'm just going to share my comments, and then depending on where the conversation goes for my colleagues, I do have some suggested language that I thought should be added. First, I do want to say that the language that was added requiring employees to cooperate in investigations, I think that's excellent, and I completely support it. After our last meeting, I was, it took me a while, I really mulled over what we talked about posting substantiated versus unsubstantiated, you know, not posting, and bottom line is that I think that posting the reports not only ensures transparency, but it also shows that all complaints are thoroughly investigated. Now, these reports, we know they are public. So yes, they do go to each of us, they go to the complainants, the people involved, and it goes to the press. But I do think that the, that the community expects a level of transparency from us, and I went back and I looked, now, I've been on the board since we created that office, and I looked back to see, you know, were there reports that were posted that could really be detrimental to people, and I don't see that there. So, but what I did recall was that we had a situation where the inspector general posted an investigation prior to the Office of Professional Standards completing their investigation. So, you know, the people involved were basically tried and convicted in the public, but we haven't finished our investigation. So my bottom line was that I'm, you know, I am more comfortable with this continuing the way we are, posting the investigations, but I want to add some language that investigations are not posted until the completion of all related active open investigations are completed. So I do have language later, but, but that's where I stand on it. I think that we need to be completely transparent, and I do not feel that at this point they are public anyway. I do not want to give any, anyone thought that we are trying to hide anything, and I also want the public to know that we take every single complaint very, very seriously, and that we do investigate it. And so I want them to see that, yes, there's going to be times that we will find things that are substantiated, and yes, there will be times when we don't. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I did spend quite a bit of time talking to Mrs. Michael, and I'm happy that you actually gave us your information today, which you said to me that you would be doing. Many of us were sitting here, Ms. Brill and some of the rest of the board members, we really worked hard for this policy. It took a long time for us to get it right for this IG policy. And as we got a few knocks from the papers and others out in the community, I was really concerned that people would think that after all the work that we had done here in Palm Beach County, and we had never had a pushback about how the IG office had been run with integrity, transparency, openness, that people would think that we would be advocating for something like that. And when you shared with me, that's not anything that you would be advocating for, that made me feel better. And so I really want to make sure that we're transparent. I think, you know, the IG office has been fair, working with those who bring complaints, those who may be involved in an investigation or an audit, and some of the findings may be unfounded, or they could be actually substantiated, but people do understand that. They do have a voice in this process with our IG, and I had not heard of too many people complaining about how they had been treated throughout the years with the IG office as it related to investigations and the audits. I think one of the big things that we try to do here in Palm Beach County is training. People can make a mistake, and something can go wrong. And if it does, if it wasn't intentional, we try to help people to learn, to do better so that they can move forward with their lives. But we definitely have to be open and honest about what happened here in the Palm Beach County School District, and that's why you are independent, and the information needs to be out there. Yes, I was concerned about people may have to pay money to get the report. It should be out there for people. It should be out there for people to see it. We have nothing to hide here in Palm Beach County. So, thank you very much for clarifying yourself as it related to all of this and that you're not here to hide, to change, to do something that could demean the IG's office, that you're here to make sure that everyone has an equal opportunity to express themselves if they are investigated. It's going to be done in a manner that's going to be very professional. And I just had not heard a whole lot of people saying that that's not what was going on anyway. So, I don't want us to deviate when we have something that's good, let's stay there. And I do commend the board members that were here during that time. You did a great job in putting those policies together as, as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ramis?
Thank you. So, let me start with the easy piece. So, under the whole section six and seven about the, essentially the training, let me just reiterate the importance of that being internet or video, right? So that there's a consistent message. The, the part about administrators and supervisors reviewing it annually with their employees is not really important to me if we have, or I don't think it's necessary, to be honest with you, if we have mandatory training done by video. Because in that way, it's also consistent, there's no mixed messages, there's no interpretation, it's coming straight from the IG or whoever it is delivering the message in the video. I would also suggest that, that our IT people figure out a way that people can have in their, maybe in PeopleSoft or wherever, but the videos that they have completed, so they have easy access if they want to go back and get a refresher real quick, they don't have to search high and low to try to find that particular training. And so, that's, that's the easy part. So, now, let's get to, to the other part. So, as I recall, when we discussed this in December, I was, honestly, I was taken aback. But yeah, I was here with all these, we had long, like painful meetings, creating the IG and the policy, right? But then I also, also had to reflect, so you know, where, where I come from, they say snitches get stitches, okay? Now, you said it in a much more professional, eloquent way, and I think it's appropriate to recognize the fact that it would have a chilling effect on an employee to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, about maybe their supervisor or even, or their coworkers, right? And that, and as I reflect, you know, I've had people who called me with complaints when I would say, well, you need to contact the IG, they would say, oh, no, not me. And I end up telling the IG and then, at least on one occasion, I was told that the investigation basically went nowhere because people would not talk now, right? And so, I think that your point is well made. I want to ask, I, I know I've been told that we cannot redact or, or make people anonymous who are witnesses in the report, but I'm, I want to ask legal if they would research that because I think that that, if we're able to find a way to do that, that that will solve a piece of the problem. So, now, let me also kind of tease this out. So, there's no doubt in my mind that complaints that have been investigated by the IG and are substantiated should be released to the public. I'm, I'm clear. I'm clear there, crystal clear. And, and that release includes the media releases that you mentioned to me as well as posting it on the website. And in any other way, we, we automatically release things to the public. If it's a complaint that's substantiated, yes, very clear. Now, the ones that, and when I say substantiated, I mean in whole or in part. So, if, if there's five complaints or five accusations in this complaint, in my mind, if one of them is substantiated, the whole doggone thing is, is released automatically. Now, the ones that are not substantiated, I think for me, and I think I started going there when we discussed this in December, that's, that's a different ballgame to me. You know, I've become aware from our conversations that the practice is to, even unsubstantiated reports is to notify the press via a press release. So, I, I believe that any completed investigations that have no substantiated allegations should not be automatically released to the public in any form or fashion, media release, website, anything. I think if it's unsubstantiated, there should be no automatic release. Of course, it is always available upon request, always. And, and so, to me, I think that teases out, teases out the difference. The other thing I want to throw in is somewhere along the line, we need to have a conversation about frivolous complaints. And, and that is probably not the word the general counsel would want to use, but you know the, the types of complaints that, that I'm talking about. And, and I think that that's the to-be-figured-out list. But for now, I'm really clear that all investigations are available by public request, those that have any components that are substantiated are automatically released. But I don't think that those that are not substantiated should be automatically released. And again, I think that I could probably look at that a bit differently if we're able to redact names of witnesses. So, that's my two cents for now.
Vice Chairwoman Brill, hold on one second. For those watching the meeting via live stream on our district website, YouTube was briefly interrupted for a couple of minutes. If you are having lingering problems, please refresh your YouTube link. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted, as always, in its entirety at the conclusion of this meeting. Vice Chairwoman Brill?
Thank you. So, you know, one of my concerns is if we only post things that are substantiated, even if they contain things that are not substantiated, it's going to look like, wow, look at the school district, look at all the corruption in the school district. You know, we're going to go out for taxpayer dollars, if we're going to go out for another referendum, another sales tax. I want the public to know that we do get these other complaints and we do investigate them and we do take it very seriously. I agree with basically what Mrs. Andrews said is if it's not broken, don't fix it. You know, we work very hard on that. So, I think we're going to have to come to an agreement and vote on the piece of whether we post everything. I agree with Dr. Robinson, sort of like when we have complaints that are filed on a student, you know, they just have their initials. You know, maybe if there's a way to do that in those reports, that would end that problem with the, with the, the items that are unsubstantiated. I was going to suggest a change to the verbiage here so that we keep it. And so, I guess at this point, I'm going to make a motion for, and add some language. The first motion would be on line 588.
Ms. Brill? Do you mind, a couple of the board members want to speak before you do that? And I'll come right back to you so you can make those modifications. Mrs. Woodfield and then Ms. Ayala.
Thank you. I'd like to wholeheartedly agree with Dr. Robinson on this. I feel like in this situation, I know specifically of staff members who have had this office weaponized against them. And I imagine what it would be like to be a staff member who was having false claims put against them. We're talking about people's careers. And if I see, and I do a search for John Smith, because I'm thinking about employing him in a future date, and I look and I have, he has had 10 accusations of the same impropriety or something, all unsubstantiated, I'll think as a future employer that that could possibly be true and somebody just didn't catch it. When in the reality, John Smith has somebody in his office who doesn't like him and is constantly put in an anonymous complaint. And the fact that we let people anonymously complain means that there is some burden on us to protect people who are being attacked for no reason. I mean, we want people to want to work for this district. And the fact that basically no other IGs do this practice really, really concerns me. And I, I, you know, I've had many conversations with Ms. Michaels about this as well. I was in full support of, of making sure that we protected people from unsubstantiated. Obviously, if it's substantiated, I am 100% on board. I want to recognize corruption and I want this office to have the full power to do everything that they need to do in this work, but I am afraid that, that we could hurt people's careers and livelihoods that have done nothing wrong. Now, if everybody promises to be great, then we wouldn't have to worry about this, but we all know that's not going to be the case. It's just, it's just not. So, I love Dr. Robinson's suggestion about only publishing ones that have any substantiated, anything in them. But if it's fully unsubstantiated, I, I would like to stand up for the staff here who I know must be feeling like this is an undue burden on them if, you know, they, they're trying to do their job and, you know, somebody just doesn't like them. I don't think that's very fair at all. So, I would love to try to figure out a way to, to protect them on some level. Thank you.
Ms. Ayala?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, IG Michael. It was great to have a conversation with you about this in depth last week, so I appreciate that. And I wanted to start by saying that I fully support the professionalism, independence, and important mission of the IG's office and your work and your team. And I do appreciate you reflecting on this particular policy piece because I don't, I won't speak for my other colleagues as I don't know, but I did receive a lot of contact from the public after our first reading on this, on this topic with concerns about us hiding transparent information from the public. And I, I prefer, and I think we all do, to err on the side of transparency, a steady flow of information available to the public, and maintain a high level of credibility as a district. And I know that you are fully in line with that. So, to move forward into the future as a district, policies are often going to have to be revised and looked at and reflected upon as we encounter changing times. But at this time, I think that public trust must be of top concern and of top importance. So, while I'm open to Vice Chair Brill's recommendation to look at the language and maybe alter at what stage in the process these are placed on the website, I think that it's critical that I voice the concerns I heard from the community about maintaining our transparency as a district and making sure that we are creating a space for free flow of public information from us to them. Thank you.
Before I call Mrs. Woodfield, Mrs. Andrews, and Dr. Robinson, I have a question myself. General Counsel, is it possible for, if, I'm torn on this too because I want to make sure the public understands we're not trying to hide anything, but I also, you know, like it's been said, if I can call anonymously and complain that somebody did something horrendous just because I don't like them and it gets reported up there, I mean, it's destroying somebody's name. So, is it possible that if we're going to post unsubstantiated reports, that the IG reports that claim of whatever was made against a district employee unnamed but was found to be unsubstantiated? So, we still put them up there, so if somebody heard that something terrible happened, they can see that it was reported and it, and it was unsubstantiated, but they never see the person's name that it was reported against. Is it possible for us to do that, to not name a person who's been accused of an unsubstantiated offense of some type?
I'm going to have my office look at this again, but my memory on this, I mean, we're a public agency, we are all in the public domain. I do not believe there is an exception. There are two, there is at least one, sexual harassment victims, right? That one I'm very familiar with. But we'll, we'll look at it again because I don't want to speak out of turn, but I have a strong hunch that we are not going to be able to redact the names just because we are all subject to public disclosures with very limited exceptions.
Okay. And I think, I think it's important that the public also realizes, I mean, I sit at the audit committee meetings every single month. The inspector general reports every single investigation to the audit committee, which is public. In fact, the Palm Beach Post and the Sun Sentinel, back before the pandemic, sat behind the glass there and listened to those. The audit committee members all discuss it in public and then they put it in a report that goes to the school board. And if the school board finds it so horrific that we want to talk about it, we talk about it because it's part of the reporting at that board meeting. So, there's never been any, even with not posting them on the website, there's ever, ever been any situation where the public doesn't have access to an investigation that was done by the IG office. So, it's just got to be clear on the record that we weren't trying to hide things because we've always done this publicly. The only thing that's changing, that was, that the IG had, had suggested be changed was publishing every single report on, on the website. With that said, Mrs. Andrews and then Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. And this discussion is, is very needed because of the time that we spent on this policy and now that we're getting ready to make a change. And I do appreciate you, Ms. Michael, telling us what you learned when you actually called the different agencies. But I'd like to see a matrix because we have the urban seven. Broadwood County, I think, has an inspector general, Miami Dade, you can even contrast us with the county inspector general. On this topic that we're talking so much about as to whether we want to make this change or not and what to leave out and what to put in, we've got these offices with our urban seven big school districts. And if you give me that matrix to tell me what they've been doing, how long they've been doing, and how successful it is, I think that would be helpful. Now, I did, I did hear you talk about, maybe it was Detroit and some places out of state, and you called the council of great city schools. I, I don't see any of that stuff. I would like to see what's going on nationally because when we actually put this policy together, we had piles of information to look at before we made that final decision. I am truly interested in making sure that there's no indication that we're not being transparent. And if we do make a change and tweak this a little bit, I want to make sure I have enough evidence to know that this is the way to go based on the current findings of other districts comparable like us in school districts across the country. So, I'd like for you to check on the urban seven and maybe with the information that you received, maybe from the council and some of these other big districts across the United States, put that together. Because I didn't see that, I just heard you tell me that and I want to see it before I want to make a change.
Yes, I, I disseminated a survey. First of all, I went to the, the council to find out how many school districts have their inspector general. And I, I was able to determine, you know, there was Los Angeles, Chicago, Philadelphia, Detroit, I think that was it. And I sent surveys to them requesting how they handle certain topics, certain areas. And one of them was posting investigations on websites. Didn't receive a response from everybody, but I was able to look on their website, look at their policies and see, do they automatically post? And they do not. The only thing I found was that Philadelphia, I believe, will post serious activity reports, those that are of security, safety, and of a large media. I then looked at the states, the state system as far as IGs because they deal with the same Florida record laws and in, and in the same environment. The only state IG that posts investigations on their website is DCF. And this has been a topic that was brought up with the chief inspector general's office at Tallahassee, which when I was in IG at DFS, this was a topic that was brought up. And it was decided that, and the conversation was this would chill, this would have a chilling effect on people not wanting to automatically report. It's like when, when a reporter comes to a person, they're hesitant to say something and they, they always want the off the record so they don't get in trouble. We don't have off the record with the IG's office. So, I, I can't give somebody that, especially if I know who they are. So, when I say that this, it's a chilling effect, is I believe that we would get more information, we would have more things reported. We may not have anybody complaining that, you know, about the investigation because it is what it is, but I wonder how many more people will feel empowered that they can come forward if their name wasn't put on the website? That's the only thing, is just putting it on the website. We're still being transparent, we're still, we still have everything open to the public. And transparency and posting on a website, to me, are, are two different things so that the person is not the gossip and fodder for anybody that just wants to. And that was my concern. But I will definitely do some more research if you like.
Yeah, because I want to know about Miami Dade and some of those big ones. They're right here in the neighborhood and these are school districts, you know, as Orange, wherever they do have an IG office, I really want to know, I mean... I mean, the state is a little different, DCF is a little different. But I just really want to see that matrix because this is what we use. We had a lot of information before we actually approved those policies back in the day when we created this. So I really want to see that matrix and I believe what you're saying here, but I want to see all the, especially the urban seven school districts that's right here in the state of Florida. I haven't seen that.
All right, Dr. Robinson and Ms. McQuinn, then we're back to Vice Chairwoman Brill.
Okay, thank you. So, um, so I want to just, to circle back to follow up on Mr. Barbieri's request to General Counsel that we also look, the answer might be the same, but look at redacting the name of witnesses in the report. The, I also make the point that, as I understand, the listing of all investigations is provided in the annual report from the IG, right? So, um, and when that, the annual report is made public, so it's just not a look at this kind of attention getter as a media release would be. I, I want to echo Mrs. Andrews' request for a matrix. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, essentially, as we discussed earlier, just to see, and I want to include in, in that matrix whether or not they accept anonymous reports. I'm guessing that that is considered a best practice, but I want to know that, right? Because, because part of my thought process is what do we do to decrease the likelihood of these, these complaints that are not made for the greater good? That these complaints that are just made to harass someone or, or whatever? I'm, I'm really trying to search for that activity. What can we do to decrease that likelihood? So I want to add anonymous, whether or not anonymous reporting is considered to be the best practice. And I'm curious to know this definition from Philadelphia about a serious activity report. So I would like that included in the matrix too. I personally would like the matrix to not, not exclude people who are not school districts. Like, I think we, as has been mentioned, the Palm Beach County, OIG, and whatever other entities that you think are, are well-respected by other IGs, just so that we can compare and contrast. Because we did do a lot of that in developing, in developing this policy. And I probably can dust all that off and dig it out. But, but I would like to have a, up-to-date matrix report from you. Thank you.
Ms. McQuinn.
Yes, first of all, when Ms. Michael called me in response to some negative press about the transparency of the IG's office, I chose, and I still choose, to err as she has recommended on the side of transparency. However, I want to give an example of, of a situation I called her about, I'm going to say a couple of months ago. I don't, time seems to be a little off lately. Anyway, an employee contacted me, this is when we were doing the, doesn't matter, I don't want to be that specific because the employee's so worried about being identified. So an employee contacted me with a, a concern about the employee supervisor. So I called Ms. Michael and I explained the situation to her and I said, can this employee remain anonymous? And she said ultimately, no. So I called the employee back and said, you're going to have to understand that when the complaint is investigated, you will not anymore be anonymous. And so she just let it, the employee, just let it go. So that's the kind of thing, I guess, I don't think we can have a policy that meets all of those specific situations. But certainly for me, that was the kind of situation that I have hoped we would be able to avoid. Thank you.
Vice Chairwoman Brill.
Thank you. So I just have a few points. When it comes to the matrix, I think that's a great idea. One of the things I'd like to see included in it, I'm sure that other people have had conversations with Ms. Michaels about the idea of having a central reporting area. We're having a policy where complaints come in through the IG office and then go whether it's Office of Professional Standards or the IG, where it would be determined where it goes, but having it somehow central, because right now we have different, we have, you know, legal, we have Office of Professional Standards and IG, and they're, they're separate, but there is some relationship there. And that would, by having that, I believe that would take care of the problem also about posting before the investigations are complete. I don't want to see things withheld at all, but I also think that we need to make sure that, you know, everything that's related is handled similarly. I do have a question. Right now, while we're in this discussion, until such time as the policy changes, our policy's in place, are we posting our investigations to the website?
Yes, we are. We have, we have not deviated from the policy. I will enforce the policy as written and as the board votes. That is, so we are following through and posting those reports.
Thank you. And so then my, my last item is that, one of my concerns is that if we have investigations that are not posted and somebody wants it, they have to pay for it, right? We charge for public records. So, you know, that's also an issue for me. I, again, I go back to, you know, I'm still not convinced that we should not be posting them. I do like the idea of redaction of names and witnesses and that would maybe make more people more comfortable coming forward. But looking back on the investigations that we have, I can't identify any particular situation where someone is doing it just as harassment over and over to someone. I just don't see that in the history of what that, your office has handled. So, you know, I don't, I really don't want to look at what ifs. And I do think that the public expects a certain level of, and I do think it is transparency putting it up on the, on the website. So, you know, I agree with what Ms. Ayala said with regard to, to what is expected of us.
Dr. Robinson.
So that brings up a very interesting point. So while we're talking all this stuff about transparency for complaints that go to and investigations done by the inspector general, are we going to expect that same kind of transparency for complaints to, and in investigations done by employee relations, EEO, school police? I mean, I just need to know, are we, how transparent are we talking about? I'm telling you, we're opening up a can of worms now. And so now that our IG has, has brought forward this concern, which I, I think is a valid concern, I think that we need to parse this out. And, and whatever it is, right? Because we have everybody doing these investigations. If, if, if we go to a central, whatever, point of contact, whatever the, the language was for the complaints and investigations, then we cannot say that if it goes through the IG, but it gets, it gets handed over to employee relations, that then that one doesn't get, that doesn't get published. I mean, I think we have to look at this in terms of all investigations of potential wrongdoing. And, and I think that we need to, we can change our policy. You know, like, for example, the public records, maybe we have an exemption that says if you, it's a public record request for the investigation, we don't charge you. I don't know. I don't know the answers. I just see the problem now that I didn't see as clearly before. But in talking to people since that, that workshop in December, yeah, people want, people want to know what we did, what people did wrong, right? When I follow up with, what about the ones that are not substantiated? Everybody that, that I had input from said, yeah, well, you know, you don't need to just tell everybody that. So, I mean, I just think that we need to step back and, and we need to get the information that has been requested, both from General Counsel and our IG. And so I don't, if anybody else wants to, I want to make a motion to postpone any further discussion of this until our February special meeting time, whenever that is. I don't have, because I don't think we're ready to, okay, that's my motion. What is it? February 3rd.
February 3rd would be the next special meeting. Are you making mo, are you agreeing? Ms., Dr. Robinson's made a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, the second one was made by Mrs. Andrews or Mrs. Woodfield, both at the same time. So you can pick. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Go ahead, Dr. Rob, uh, Mrs. Andrews.
Yeah, because I hear you, Dr. Robinson. And when we get that matrix, that additional information that you're talking about, we need to see how the process works here now. You know, I worked in those departments. I don't know exactly how they do it now, how much is put out there, who gets what, do they have to pay for it? So I think we're going to have to have a big picture of what's going on here in this district now as it relates to employee relations, investigations, so on, as well as the urban districts and how they do it, the urban seven. And we can get a good little sense of how we're doing business and if we're doing one thing one way and another way and being a little bit discriminatory on what we're doing. But we need to see what we're doing right now and things change over time. So as a board, I think we need to see how it really works here in Palm Beach County at this point.
One comment I have before we, we vote, I don't know if we voted yet on this. Did we vote? I don't know if we voted. Did we vote, Ms.? Oh, we didn't vote. Okay, so we're still in our discussion. So Inspector General Michael, would you look at line 502 to 505? Because if we're going to discuss this at the next meeting, I'd like to bring it to your attention now. Inspector General shall refer matters to the appropriate district officer outside agencies that are provided in this policy, but shall keep a record. The district officer receiving unit shall submit a periodic status report to the inspector general. I want that boned up so that there's no question that if you refer something to another department, that they absolutely have to give you a report upon your request and you can't hear anything about that. It's not my job to report to you. I want to make it clear that you can go anywhere you want to go in this district and ask for a status report on something that's happening and that, and the employee that you're talking to does not have the authority to say, no, I'm not going to give it to you.
Yes, sir. I'll look at shoring that up and I would like to address a template of the required information that we need to follow up so we can close the loop when we do a referral. And we can ensure that those areas that are being sent to outside offices, criminal, employee relations or whatever, what they did and what they found. So that I believe is something that we could add to that.
So can you bring that back to us at the February 3rd meeting? Some, something that we can discuss at that point?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Brill.
Just as a final comment, very key, and I'm sure everybody realizes this too, our follow-up with the matrix is finding out from legal, you know, can we redact names? Because that, that changes the whole picture, the whole complexion of this. Thank you.
All right, and before we close this out and take, take a vote, do you want to introduce your new attorney? Or do you want to?
I would like to introduce, we do have a new general counsel and something has kind of delayed some of the things that we have coming forward. Carrie Hi has joined us. He is in private practice as well as being a instruct, a professor, board? Yeah, at the Palm Beach State College where he taught the paralegal studies. He was the chair of the paralegal studies and we're very lucky to have him. I've been putting him on the carpet and calling him in, but he will be here to represent our office and to make sure we have sound legal advice.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a vote on the motion to table. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Superintendent TL1. I think that's just, we're just, I guess there's no motion. We're just discussing that today?
Yes, sir. Yes, just to read.
All right.
Dr. Sheffield.
Good afternoon, again, board members, I'm Dr. Fanoi. Today's agenda item TL1 is to provide an opportunity for public comments pertaining to our upcoming ELA textbook adoption. As you all are aware, policy 8.122 requires an open notice school board hearing to receive public comments on the recommended instructional materials. In checking with Mrs. Bass, it does not appear that we have any public comments at this time. There is no action that will be taken today. However, it is important to know that we will be returning to the board in February for the required action. So at this time, Diana Fettman, the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, will provide an overview of our next step as we are preparing to return to the board in February for actions that must be taken. Mrs. Fettman.
Good afternoon, Dr. Fanoi and board members. We are excited to bring to you the committee's recommendation for our English Language Arts materials. As Dr. Sheffield stated, the next board meeting on February 17th, that will be the action item. In order to allow you time to peruse the materials, on this board item, you have both an electronic link so you can review them at your time. Additionally, hard copies of the materials will be available to you upstairs in the board suite. Those will be available starting tomorrow morning. We did want to provide you with an overview of the entire adoption process. We did start a little bit later this year due to the pandemic. However, our principals did have the opportunity to nominate their teachers or coaches. Regional team members were also nominated and available to participate. And then, as always, we had community members that served on our committees. We did hold four separate committees, an elementary core English Language Arts Committee, the same committee for secondary, an elementary intervention committee, and then a secondary intervention committee. Additionally, we had department members from our gifted education team, multicultural, ESC, our African, African-American, Latino, gender studies, and Holocaust education team, and as well as our ed tech team. The materials were reviewed for their alignment to standards, including our new best standards, which will start with the implementation next school year. Of course, WIDA alignment, access points alignment, and more. Additionally important to us was ensuring that we had teacher support materials, community support materials, making sure that there were, it aligned tightly to instruction and it addressed the needs of all learners, including having assessment opportunities available. In November and through the beginning of December, the top choices that the committee selected were made available to schools to sample as we typically do and as outlined in board policy. However, due to the pandemic, this year, we allowed those selections to be sampled electronically so teachers would have the ability to go through each of the options in electronic format. Teachers submitted their feedback and the committees reconvened to review all that feedback and make their final recommendations. At this time, we are bringing the final recommendations for the core English Language Arts materials to you. For our elementary English Language Arts, we are bringing forth Benchmarks, Advanced, and Adelante Series. So we will have it available in both completely in English and available completely in Spanish for our dual-language schools. And then for our 612 series, we will be bringing forth McGraw-Hill's Study Sync. So that will conclude. We'll, of course, if there are any questions.
Questions, board members? I have a question for you, Ms. Fettman. Maybe you said this when I was down talking to the board clerk, but have all the principals have had an opportunity to see the books?
Yes, sir.
Or is it just a small committee? So all the principals have had exposure so they can all, all of them can see what we're proposing?
In, starting in mid-November through the beginning of December, we sent links with all of the materials to all school-based principals, regional instructional superintendents, and all teachers to review. We also discussed it in principal meetings and really encouraged them to review the materials and provide us with feedback on the two to three finalists in order to allow the committee to make the best recommendation to the board.
Okay, great. Thanks. Mrs. Andrews?
And so you'll be sending the electronic file out tomorrow? Is that what you said?
The electronic file is on the board agenda, but we'll also make sure that Ms. Bass has the two the two links, electronic links, but tomorrow morning, you will have physical copies of all the books. That way, you can peruse which, either one you prefer.
Okay.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, I just want to take a moment to thank you for embracing the advocacy of the Coalition for Black Student Achievement in terms of the ELA textbook adoption. As you know, and I don't know if the other board members know, the Coalition created a rubric, which the Coalition independently got copyrighted, and I, and you've included all of the Coalition's rubric in your rubric and got it independently copyrighted, so that's good. And then, and then during the process, then Hispanic Education Coalition was invited in, and they, for the most part, took the, the recommendations of the Coalition for Black Student Achievement and made them, made it their own, so to speak. And so, I think we ended up with a very good rubric. So, I see that you did send, I don't know when you sent the, the spreadsheet of the reviewer's scores, so it's overwhelming. I don't understand it, and so, I'll schedule a meeting with you, because I'm, you know, I'm specifically looking for the evaluation of the rubric items connected to recommendations from the Coalition and Hispanic Education Coalition. But now that I've said all that, just tell me where we are with phonics in this adoption, because I need phonics.
Well, first, thank you. We are incredibly proud of the work that we have done in collaboration with the Coalition of Black Student Achievement and the Hispanic Education Coalition. And yes, we actually made the entire phonics and foundational skills piece, one of the non-negotiable items. So, one of those pieces that we said, if you, this is not a strong core component of your program, please don't even bother coming to the table, and it is. So, we, we'll have that, and we also have it tagged, or one of those things that we have marked in the books, so when they're brought upstairs, the physical copies tomorrow, you will see those marked. Additionally, the strong vocabulary instruction parts are also tagged and bookmarked.
And then, it's important, it's, as the board members, as you are reviewing, if you wanted to schedule a time with Ms. Federman, myself, a member of the team, to go along with you as you're reviewing, virtually or in person, we definitely will make that available.
Ms. Ayala?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to also thank you and the team for all the work you've done with our principals in our schools and our community members and the committee at large to get these materials done. I know how things, things are changing so fast, it's important that our textbooks and our materials are relevant to our students' education today. And in my conversation with Deputy Superintendent Oswald, I was very pleased to see the attention to making sure that for our reading intervention ELA materials, the translations are not butchered. We are actually taking content and receiving applicants that are highly, making themselves aware of the cultural differences and nuances when it comes to the Spanish language representation. So, I wanted to say my piece on that, say that that's a priority for me and for my, members of my community. So, thank you for making sure that that's a priority as well for what we're presenting our students with.
Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. What are we getting out of this for our parents and community members to help support ELA proficiency in our students?
So, a parental component, or I call it more of a community-based component, because it will be open. So, there is a community-based component that is available in several languages that is part of the program. However, we are still, when, when we come back in the February piece, that is when we'll have completed negotiation of budget, and so, we'll have that complete package ready at that February meeting. At this point, we're still negotiating all the final details of what we're purchasing. So, there is a community component, which will be available, but exactly all of the different items within that are still being negotiated as part of the budget process.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Okay, so, you want ideas on what can be included? Because, because we could do that separately, but I, listen, they're, they're going to get a lot of money. And then, as I understand, a lot of districts kind of will piggyback on what our decision was. So, I, we're in the driver's seat, and we need to ask, I think, for more at a bare minimum, bare minimum. We need, they need to give Doch sight words cards to every kindergarten or first grader in, in the county. And, and so, and we can say to parents, here's, do this, please, we've, you know, do five cards a day or whatever, but there's other things, because we can't say that we want parents to be partners and not provide them with the tools, the bite-sized chunks of things that they can do that would have a substantive impact. You know, it, we, we can't ask for them to do something and not help them do something, and this is an opportunity to get the textbook publishers to, to help us with that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Superintendent, do you?
Yeah, I think it's just important for the, for the board and for all of us to recognize, I mean, the work that this team and the community have done to get to this place is tremendous. But the real, the real work for us is the implementation of all of this. And I, and I want to be very clear about that. Like, we, we as a system are going to have to be much clearer on our expectation on using these tools. We can't just put books in people's hands and then say, okay, well, go make it. No, we have to be clear in our training and our, in our evaluation system. So, very excited that the conversations the team has been having lately around the fidelity of the use of resources. You know, we leave a lot of things on the table, and unfortunately, some things just go unused in our buildings. And so, I think there's, there's a lot of heavy lifting for us, I think, and we've been able to kind of really look at it and say, wow, how many different tools have we had? And now, we're at a place to create new tools that are, as, as several board members have said, are much more aligned to where we are today, but we've got to execute. All of us are going to have to execute at a high level and be honest when we find schools or we find people not using the tools as we have designed them. So, it's just something I needed to say on the record, because there's a lot of shifting, mental shifting that we're going to have to do and paradigm shifting as it relates to what happens on the ground, so that we can be consistent when we help our families. Because one of the biggest challenges, especially for our students who are, who are not working at the same levels as others, is sometimes the realities of life cause you to move a lot, right? So, if you move from, if you go to, there are kids in our district who may be in two or three schools in one year. What we have to get to a place of is that as they transition schools, they're not starting all over again every time they move, because it's not their fault. And so, I think as we recognize the realities of the economy moving forward, it's going to impact others at a much more significant rate than some of the rest of us. So, it's just important, it was important for me as we kind of concluded this with the team, to, we, we, as a team have to understand that we now have to become laser-focused in making sure that what we, we inspect, what we expect. And because as, because what would bother me the most is that, is to Dr. Robinson's point, this team has always created amazing tools, but you want to talk about aggravating me is if another district uses our tools better than us.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. And just, I just can't let you get away that fast. So, just to circle back on that, because it triggered. So, part of this, and I want to be really clear, that training around culturally responsive teaching goes hand in hand with the ELA professional development, right? And you know why I say that? Because, you know, unfortunately, many people do not recognize the fact that African-American English is a language, and therefore, will treat black children as though they're just dumb black children trying to speak English, right? Now, I hope that we don't hear any more of that stuff about, you know, why don't you just speak English when one acknowledges that the home language is something other than English? But for multi-generational Africans in America, there's really not an intellectual recognition that the home language is a different language, and therefore, there's not, there's minimal respect for the child and their academic abilities, and there certainly is not any intentional teaching the child to translate into the academic language. And so, we must make sure that culturally responsive teaching is, is tied to the professional development for this ELA adoption. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. I would like to ask if you could actually provide information to our educational advisory groups. They are very pro education, meeting once a month, and when I look at this, to say that the timeline, you know, to come to a board meeting to react on it, just like it's going to be electronically looked at by us or getting the hard copies. I know you have a wonderful advisory group in Wellington, Royal Palm Beach, the Tri-Cities in the Glades area, as well as Westlake now, the newest city in Palm Beach County. I think sending it to them, and if you don't know who the contact people are, I'd like for them to know that we're going into this new recommendation for English Language Arts instructional materials, and for them to look at it, to know what's going on, because this board meeting will pass, it'll be approved, and they have no idea. And then, the kids are bringing home books, and those are the leaders within the community, representing education, representing the elected officials.
Okay, one last question, for me anyway. And Dr. Sheffield, I think I told the Deputy Superintendent I was going to ask. So, I'm concerned about whether or not we're using enough electronic books. You know, we're switching, everything's gone electronic, so, I mean, we, I got these kids, you know, my own grandkids, you know, they carry a backpack that weighs 65, 70 pounds because they got five huge books in there, and the kids throw them in their lockers, and then they forget, they, you know, they don't want to pick them up and go and carry them home. Are we taking advantage of making sure that electronic books are available for kids that don't want the hard, the hardcover?
Well, this will come back, Mr. Barberie, with the discussion in February, as they are pricing it out. So, of course, we will work with the publisher in terms of pricing out hard copies as well as the digital, because we have, so we, we will have both priced out, but it's all going to be tied to, you know, to the funding and, of course, in working with Mr. Burke there in regards to, you know, what additional funding we have and what's been allocated by the state for this adoption.
Well, I'm not suggesting we buy duplicates where we have a hard copy and electronic copy, if the publisher's charging is basically the same, but, I mean, we need to make some determinations about how many hard copies do we really need as opposed to getting electronic copies and then splitting it somehow, so that kids that don't want to carry the book around will have the opportunity to take electronic as, you know, especially the, the high school. You know, the high school kids probably would be the ones that would most likely not want the big thick book to carry around. The little ones, maybe they need the book because they're harder for them to maneuver on, you know, on, on the internet, but the older kids, especially now after they've been spending a year, you know, learning how to do their, their work.
We will definitely make certain that's all part of the breakdown when we come back to the board, where you'll be able to see.
Okay. And before we close out the workshop, Dr. Fanoi, can you, I know this wasn't part of the agenda, but can you just advise the board? Monday was the deadline. I know that we're allowing parents to still make choices, but how many more children do we have coming back that we, that we think we're coming back this year?
I don't have the hard numbers on us right now, but we can get that to the board this week. It just closed yesterday, right?
Yes, it closed on yesterday.
Yeah, it closed yesterday. So, we'll get that to you this week.
Okay, because we're, I know a lot of parents and people are asking us, you know, how many kids are coming back, including the press. All right. If nobody else has any questions for Dr. Sheffield and Ms. Diane, for Diane, we'll take a motion to adjourn the workshop. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield. Yeah. Oh, I'm just closing out, I guess that was part, that is part of the workshop. I'm thinking that's separate from the workshop, but you're right, we have to, the board discussion items, I was going to do that after the, the vote, but let's do that now. We, you have four board discussion items. Dr. Robinson, yours is first on COVID-19.